I think it's in board, that's what I thought. What's the sign? This is. I can't see anything.
I'm trying to watch my.
I've had ten feet.
Five minutes ahead and I'm twenty-eight minutes. Only twenty-eight time left.
It's okay.
I'd like to call the Board of Education. Meeting to order at five thirty-two P. M. on September eighth, Monday. Roll call.
Beaton.
Here.
Becker. Porters.
Present.
Fox.
Here.
Brown was.
Here.
Ritchie.
Here.
Here.
Okay, next is approval of the agenda.
I'm for motion to approve the agenda as written. Support.
Motion by Hagen and support by Monica to approve the agenda as written. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Porters.
Yes.
Ritchie.
Yes.
Beaton.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Brown was.
Yes.
Yes. Next is public comment. So I just need to say this is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting school district business and is not to be considered a community public meeting. The Board has provided two opportunities during the meeting for the public to address the Board respectfully. Personal attacks unrelated to a person's job that disrupts the meeting will be stopped. Rules are posted on the wall. If you have questions, you have five minutes to state your name and address and speak. So I have Don McGinnis first.
Don McGinnis, thirteen thirty-seven East Granite. I'm here to bring up a few things. Once again, you know, every meeting I keep watching, I keep watching, you guys keep saying that, what is this going to say for my staff members? What is this going to say if I do this for my staff members? What does that show? I got a couple of things on that comment that I wanted to make sure I bring up. It would bring accountability to your staff members. It would bring admitting that you're wrong and willing to fix the issue. It would be proving that you're not sweeping everything under the rugs constantly. And what about all the other staff, the third-party staffs, the edgy staff employees that you guys have? Me? What does that show for you guys? How does that not matter? So I wanted to bring that all up to your guys' attention. I've been thinking about it. Every week I keep saying, you know, I believe they did their job. I believe they did this. Well, I don't believe that. I believe they didn't do their job. They admitted that they did wrong. They admitted that they did policies. You said that they followed policies, but yet you guys turn around and said that you guys don't follow policies and procedures and made twenty-five new ones. Something has to change here. Something has to be done here. It needs to start from the top. You guys have to work your way down. You guys have to start working together and doing what's best for the kids, putting the best candidates in place for the kids. I have had students, I've had parents, I have had referees, I have had so many people come up here and speak, and I could have the room full every week if I asked. Every week I can. That's all I had to do is call them up, say, be here. If that's what you guys want me to do, I will. It's not just a few of my friends. Again, something has to change. You know, I don't want to spend every Monday coming up here to speak about the same issues that keeps getting prolonged and prolonged and prolonged and everything keep getting hidden under the rug. And it's not just one issue. It's the same issues over and over. And if it's happening here in this spot, it's happening somewhere else. People are scared to come up here and speak because of the retaliation. And I know some of you guys, board members, are scared to speak up sometimes because of the retaliation. It happens. It's a real thing. We have to start making choices together to make the community grow. You guys have lost over twenty kids for this issue, just for the wrestling issue in the community. Twenty kids. I will give the names if you guys ask afterwards. That's how many people have left for these issues, for these choices, for these mistakes of leaving post up or not calling or not answering or whatever it is. I don't know what time I have left, because there's no clock. Thank you. Something has to change. You guys want Hazel Park to grow? Make it grow. It takes a community to do it. It takes people in the right places that know what they're doing. There's requirements on applications. We should follow those requirements. It's kind of crucial to getting somebody in there in that right place. If I'm looking for a carpenter, I'm not going to hire a shoe salesman. So, thank you.
Caitlin McGinnis, one three three seven East Granite. After the last board meeting, we received a phone call from a student that let us know that another parent, who was not this child's parent, asked to use their phone and to call her daughter because her phone was dead. When the student received their phone back, they noticed that text messages between Coach McGinnis and him were pulled up, meaning the parent was snooping through his phone without his permission. Who knows if she sent anything off of his phone to herself? That is absolutely terrifying, a grown adult going through a child's phone and it's not her child. Disgusting. As soon as we found out that that had taken place, we told the student to let their parent know immediately. We let the school lawyer and superintendent know immediately after that phone call, and a board member just happened to be standing there as well. The parent of that student called us the next day to let us know that a staff member reached out to him and tried to blame the incident on Coach McGinnis, saying he shouldn't be driving students or texting students, but did not let the parent know that that adult had committed a crime against his child. The parent was fully aware of Coach McGinnis driving his kids and thanked him for helping him out. I would like the student to know that his dad can go file a police report at any time. Whoever made that call to the parent ought to be ashamed of yourself for trying to turn this around on my husband, your disgusting human being. Board, you need new leadership. The leadership you have now is severely narcissistic and maliciously manipulative and is taking your schools down a very deeply disturbing path. It's time to clean house and start fresh. Save this school district before it's too late. Give the children of Hazel Park a leader they can look up to. They already have enough two-faced parent volunteers around them as it is. Give them someone who really cares about them and not just someone seeking the spotlight because they need the constant recognition. Have a fabulous night. Thank you.
Ian Lloyd.
Hi, Ian Lloyd, Hazel Park, four eight oh three oh. I just wanted to start off by kind of summarizing where we're at on a few fronts. I've asked for a district leadership team. I would like in writing, please, if you could respond, Ms. Wilcox. We've had an email thread that's been going on since June in regards to my willingness to serve on any committee that allows taxpayer participation. I'm unclear if you have one because there's been no definitive response. And if there is one, who is the participants that are the district leaders? And do you have agendas, minutes, potential foible items I could receive? I just want to build the transparency. When I was here, I kind of know the needs. I know what our baseline is, and over the years, we've kind of, we've lost a great opportunity to have some money expunged from our debt because we chose to have no oversight through Oakland schools. That was a participatory action because we didn't want H R here cleaning up the messes that seemingly one individual keeps erroring and making a lot of hiring mistakes, not following procedures. The only one I know that actually is a repeat offender from another state that come here with the similar stuff. I mean, so like, we know that, we know that we want to create this culture where, you know, people don't want to disappoint us. Well, what's this say when we got a community here? We got a coach, he wants to return, he teaches successfully, recognized by the MAC, you know, by the Coach of the Year status, and you created a scenario where you can't have him come back after you admitted a mistake. Why? Every one of us makes mistakes. No one thinks that you guys are going to get it all right, but when errors are brought to your attention, you know, it's okay to just kind of acquiesce and agree. And then in the future, what I don't see happening is you're not avoiding these situations each year because it's like group think is boiled down to one person think. So if a participant in the taxpayer, we want to come talk, well, we don't know how to help you because you don't formally interact with the community and us as a community aren't receiving the values out of our tax dollars. Of course, no one's going to want you guys to have fifty-five percent out of county kids. We lose like four to five grand on every kid, and then our tax base ends up paying for it. And then I'm thinking, well, what's the solution? Because I was the employee that got laid off in 2010, and if we would have stayed with Oakland schools, had some oversight, we would have been like Pontiac. We would have been in a good spot, fifty-three million dollars. You can't even compare that to our situation. So we know that we keep repeating bad decisions, and it's because we need a leader that will actually give you valid, like, the weather forecast and it be accurate. You can't, how can you keep not submitting your records over to Mackinac or applying in your one of five districts that get commercial loans out of four hundred and ninety-five that don't? You think we don't know what's going on and you're going to do it again? You kept off the deficit elimination plan from M D E list. They didn't want it, and now you're into their twenty-four month where you figured out a way to not submit the accurate numbers over there. That's asinine, absolutely crazy, that you cannot do that and actually survive as a community. And so what I would like is some monitoring and some participation from the community. I want to have an opportunity where we can come and talk to you, and you can give us feedback on where you think this deficit elimination plan is. Because I can guarantee when you compare it to the Madison District's five-year recovery plan, this area is going to be like no money. No one wants to do that. If you're a candidate, if you're a bankruptcy candidate, you should do it and restructure correctly.
That's fine.
Okay, that's all.
Thanks for.
That's all I have, but I would like some answers regarding to my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So moving on to new business, we have board goals, and what I did, I found some before from examples that we used, so I kind of did the same thing. A lot of these run together, so I thought out of continuity, I picked titles. Before, we had academic finance, community engagement, board responsibilities, leadership. It always goes on the same lines, I think. So if that's all right with you guys, I thought we could go through each one and put them under one of those categories. And in example, I think it was Monica that mentioned a retreat. So if we put that under governance, a retreat, and then we could add things to discuss at the retreat that is, I look at these as strategies. So I'm looking at governance as a title, relationship, academic finance, and community engagement. So if somebody, you know, somebody wants to comment, somebody wants to start, if you're in agreement.
How many board goals are required to have, President Hitten?
There isn't a requirement.
There isn't?
No. We've had four in the past.
Okay. So is that the target for this time?
That's what I listed, was four, governance, relationship, academic finance, and community engagement.
Okay. Thank you.
I just, I went to a training, I don't know how recently, but I brought this because it had to do with district goals, but it's still goals. And they said smart goals, be specific, be measurable, be attainable, be relevant, and be time-based. So some of these, including mine, I don't think fit those goals, but maybe we can make them fit that acronym.
Like, if you want to start, what do you think?
What? I think they're all smart goals, but.
But they have to be measurable. What is the measurement to say? So one of mine was develop an onboarding packet to help new board members. Well, that's measurable, we do it or we don't. Time-based, I would say before the next election because that way we would have it for new board members at the next election. I think that would go under as the government's title or the.
With the new pack, I did receive a packet for a new board member.
We've had one for some time.
Me and Nate received one.
For what? I can't.
What was in it?
We have one already developed.
It had, like, what was given to us, the yearly board agenda calendar. It had the board policies. I can't remember what all.
And the negotiation, and has my contract, it had sections for each one. We've had one for years.
I thought we got a binder.
That's more of a superintendent or administrator's responsibility than a board responsibility. But I agree with you, measurable. You did that before by saying, we're going to have three events. Smart goals are really for more of us on this end.
But it's still.
But you would say, I'm going to, we're going to have three outings, if you remember, you did that with Lori. We're going to have seven, six of the seven will attend four or more events in the schools. Things like that would be, I think, measurable for a board.
Right. And my second one was enhance transparency with the community by increasing public engagement opportunities and improving board communication channels. But then I think, okay, so how would I do that? That's not very specific. I'd have to get more specific on how I'd want to accomplish that. And how would I measure it? By having three opportunities for the community, four opportunities, two opportunities? So I'm trying to make my goals be smarter. That's all.
So I wrote with Darren's one, too, where he said create a student advisory committee. I thought maybe we could take our student reps that come up and have them be the committee, and they could have time to actually come sit and talk to us. Like, I know they give us updates, but there might be things they actually want to, like, sit down with us and talk to us about.
I was thinking that, too, because we do, we did get an email last year from a student at the high school that had some concerns, and that would be a nice way to make them feel like we're listening to them and try to fix or react what needs to be fixed in their eyes, whether it can be fixed or, I mean.
So I might make a suggestion that it is my intention to bring the superintendent's advisory group back together, and then you could pick a number of times you would like to meet with that group because they would have applied and been interested in coming.
Those are students?
Those would be students at the high school.
Are they all high school?
They would be high schools, yeah.
Okay.
I like that, but we should be accessible to all students, not just the people that are selected to be on the committee. It should be all students. So making us available, like, I know they do like a Bible club and different clubs at lunch. Maybe if we do a club once a month, we bring a pizza for them, say, come talk to us about your ideas.
That is what the superintendent advisory is, so.
And I don't think one negates the other. They're having, I mean, the students that come and present here, if we use them as the example, they're sort of just a one-way point of contact. I mean, they're coming from the school and they're updating us. If those students were interested in being a two-way point of contact that provides one singular smoother information channel, but it doesn't necessarily mean that a student that has individual or unique concerns that wants to reach out can't do that. We're not limiting, like, they wouldn't become like a chain of command. I think they would just become a way to funnel information in two directions, but that doesn't eliminate anybody else from reaching out, having two-way communication, two-way anything. It just streamlines it for those that are more interested in having it that way.
I kind of like the idea of what Monica was saying about getting all the groups together, maybe every other month. So we have a small group of us, two or three, whatever the limitation is, that we don't have to, you know, make notice.
Close to the meeting, yeah.
I think it's three. So three of us could be on that committee, and every other month, meet with certain people, the students, like you said, from other schools or the president's club or whatever.
But that's a committee, yes, not including the whole board. I think the board goals are for everybody on the board, not just a committee. And I do like that, Darren, and I respect your way of thinking, but I think the board goals are for everybody on the board, just not three individuals.
May I make a suggestion that, to me, seems like a board governance goal, and that would be, the student advisors weren't necessarily meant to just come up and speak. If you really look at, a suggestion that would be appropriate board governance might be to develop members, you know, you would have student members of the board, and they would sit up here, and then they share in some of your decision-making. So if you were thinking about buying a hundred computers, you might ask them what they think as a member of the board. I'm sure, Bev, you've seen that in many districts when you're watching the board meetings.
Didn't we have that briefly?
They never came to sit at the table. And what we did do was have me do the superintendent's advisory, and then those children came with things that they were trying to get passed and to change with you. But we didn't ever have them sit at the table and be a part of it, but that really is what those individuals are meant to be, is to sit and be a part of the decision-making. And there might be some training for kids, there might be training for the board to do that. But that's not something for maybe you to do, that's just something that we should do.
So, okay, so Darren had student voice at the table, creating the advisory committee to provide, so we, and Heidi said she didn't want a committee, she wanted it to be open. So what would be a governance goal that would have us be more open to the kids, available to the kids?
Well, I think Heidi doesn't want it to be a board committee. It could still be a student committee. The students would be the community members in comp. Yeah, but it would be difficult to make that as a goal because it would sort of put the onus on them, not here.
It's kind of things that, respectfully, that you are doing.
No, I understand, so I was just trying to figure out how do we do this to meet with them more often or be available to them more often? That would be a goal, for us to be available for them. I think that was what Heidi was trying to get.
So couldn't two board members go to an N H S meeting, something like that, that we attend different meetings at the high school?
So we could do, like, have all board members complete level-one status with M A S B by X amount of days? So, you know. And you could go back, with what you were saying, to what we did before by trying to get each board member to attend so many events across the district. You know, N H S is really a time when the kids are working with their advisor, and so maybe it might be attending so many plays, or it might be attending meet-the-teacher night, it might be being available at conferences, but each of you, each board member is dedicated to attend three events this year at various schools, and then we give you that list on a regular basis of what's happening, and you let us know so we don't make sure. Or we sign each one as everybody at school again.
I also think we want to be careful. We tossed out the high school several times as an example, and to remember that we have quite a few other schools.
Well, and we have administrators that do that level, and so I think we want to remember to allow them to lead their schools and then have opportunities to go and see on that.
So it sounds to me like this is too complicated. Am I right?
Maybe if one, each of us pick one of the goals, I don't see any, did Nate turn in any goals? I don't see Nate's goals on here.
He was out of town.
Oh, that's right.
See, I went through, I thought it was very simple. I knew we couldn't accomplish all of them because under governance, there's probably like ten, but I thought so much is accomplished at a retreat, number one, goals, retreat, and just like a guideline, governance is A, and then there's one, we've been talking about, and then there's the little A, and you go down and what fits under, that's how this one is, community engagement. If the A, Board of Education, will support increased community engagement, number one, the board will do two or walks in the community. So you have the title, you have the reason, and then you have the project that you're going to do. So I just went through, I thought it was, to me, I thought it was very simple, and I guess it's not like I thought. It didn't seem to be this hard before.
So if, Bev, I like the way that you're angling, where we have some specific subheaders, where we have a goal that would be, words, ensure adherence to governance practices. It is our goal. And then we have these strategies that are underneath that says, you know, we monitor protocols on a quarterly basis and make sure that they're being followed, to be like the smart, you know, like, there's a couple of things underneath there. Academic, some of them that are relating to the district improvement plan and the -- Academics, some of them that are relating to the district improvement plan and the strategic goals that we talked about at the last meeting. And have some of those sort of like mirror the board goals in like strategies and bullet points underneath. Because that's sort of how I read your email and how they, like, this was a vision.
Yes.
Where there was something more overarching and then like very specific, we, these are strategies that we can measure, make sure it's happening, that like meet that, ensure adherence at the top.
Right.
And I'm wondering, only because a lot of this is in writing, we have given our, I know that, I, I know that Nate's sick now. So I don't want to put this like very, very quickly, but I wonder if maybe we could try an ad hoc committee that sort of follows your idea of those four, those four overarching goals. Consolidates these as strategies, presents them in writing to be voted on at our next session. If, if we all agree that we like those four, the governance, academics, finance, community relations, and, I forgot the other one.
You know, it was funny, it was leadership?
Yes, sorry.
Because I hadn't looked at this, I read those and I thought, this all looks the same in governance, and this fits under relationship. Celebrate success, that's relationship, to build things, and I, so without even looking at the past goals, I came up with those same ideas.
May I suggest one more step, Ward, if I may, if you choose to go that direction? And that is, each of you have a copy of the goals, we could give you another copy and have those made while we're talking about calendar. And then if you do an ad hoc committee, you can say, I'd like you all to put the goal that you like the most for governance, the goal you like for relationship, the goal you like for academics, the goal you like for community engagement. And then those can come together and narrow it down, so that everybody's voice is heard.
These are, I, I guess I'm kind of confused on the ad hoc committee, because these are board goals. The seven of us should come up together with our goals, not a, not a committee, it's the seven of us together.
Well, what I, the only reason that I'm thinking that is because we have, we've, we've submitted this in writing, I mean, we gave our ideas to Bev. We have a lot of things here that are already overlapping. So, I mean, for example, somebody says, staff, encourage collaboration and address needs proactively. And then, respect our staff, encourage them and support them, because they are truly the ones who make our district better. Like, there's, I think a lot of this is repetitive, I mean, respectfully repetitive, where we're saying the same things, we're just using different verbiage to describe it. And we've already done the all-seven-of-us input, and I wonder if it would be more productive with our time to just have either a volunteer or a smaller group take these, run through the ones that are duplicates, so to speak, have them become those strategies, and then, you know, read them together and agree with it.
This is never been a difficult task, I've, I've, I've gone through it for five years.
I don't think it is a difficult task, but we just, I mean, in these minutes, we just jumped from, you know, this is a smart goal and what is it to a totally different subject. And I mean, like.
Heidi, could you explain, seriously, could you explain how it was done before?
Sure, I mean, we just had this, everybody said, you know, we should probably be seen in the public more. Okay, let's, let's all commit to being at an event or some type of event, six to, once a month, go to something. Go to a play, go to a baseball game, and it's, we all do it anyways, but it's just, let's just make it one of our goals and make it an effort to do so.
One of the things, if I remember correctly, is we did some work up on boards together, right? So we got the areas, we nailed it down, then everybody had their input, and then we nailed it, you know, we narrowed it down again, we did it with stickies and things like that. And that's how people do it oftentimes in the business world and what have you. I think that's what makes this difficult when you're looking at this versus trying to, somebody get up and say, please.
So can we start just, if, so let's just do this, if we start typing and say, ensure.
Well, one of our goals is, I, I think we all can agree that it's about building our relationships with each other. So maybe one of our goals should be doing a retreat together, for, we had many retreats, and they seem to, work, work very well with them.
Okay, so if we say, build relationships, board retreats.
So.
Focusing on.
Talk to me about the paper on the wall, doing the sticky note thing, and to me, you just go down this list without the sticky notes and say, okay. Listening sessions with the community, that's relationship, let's put listening under relationships. Celebrate success, that's, that's relationship, while community listening goes under community engagement.
I have an idea.
This is starting all over if we don't use.
I, I have an idea, could we write those four topics that you talked about on the top of this?
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
And do like A, B, C, D, and then let everyone go through the list and mark A for this, B for this, and C for that.
No, let's just yell them out now, and we'll, we'll do the headlines and do it.
That's what I thought in the first place, is I thought that instead of the sticky note, you just say, number A, community listen, I believe it goes under here, and this goes under here, and this goes.
Okay, so you, April started typing it up for us.
There's great ideas here.
And she has, under relationships, what are the two, what are the ones you have under relationships so far?
Board retreat, listening sessions with community, celebrating successes.
Okay, are those all?
Maybe go, committing to going to three Oakland schools together as a group. I think we did a couple of those last.
Got it.
Year, and they seem to work out very well.
Okay.
What's the next?
Okay, that isn't on the list, so are we all going to add things that aren't on the list? Because this is going to grow larger.
But complete board self-evaluations or be more present at school events, and I think there was also about completing level one school board governance class. Those are under the governance.
Under governance, yes.
Okay.
You got those three under governance?
I have two under governance, what did I miss, one, self-evaluation, level one.
Level one, and what was, what was the third one?
Complete level one school board governance, complete self-evaluation with M A S B.
I thought you said a third thing.
Mike, we just go down the list and put them in what groups, on the top down?
Yeah.
Okay, so community listening sessions, that would be under, I have it under build relationships, perfect.
What about community engagement?
I think it'd be community engagement.
Okay.
You need to decide if your relationships are with you or with the people. I think community engagements, relationships with the people, and relationships, I think, is the board.
Do we want to put a number on it? Or just leave it vague and hold it?
Hold it.
Okay, got it.
Student voice at the table, where would we put that?
I had it under relationship.
Relationships.
Okay.
Celebrating success, we had it under relationships?
Got that, all right.
I have community relations and relationship.
So those kind of, they kind of blend?
Doesn't matter.
You might find that those blend into one and become three goals instead of four.
Partnership with staff, build regular board staff round tables to strengthen trust and courage. So what do we want to call that? That would be relationships in my mind.
I have relationship on my paper.
Got it.
Family engagement.
You know, I didn't put anything there, because we have the community engagement, I'm already doing that.
Yeah, the team exists.
And part of community schools is that will be reached into more of a district committee for all of them as we move forward here.
Okay, the umbrella package is done, enhance transparency by increasing public engagement opportunities, that would be kind of like going to different events. Where would that fall?
So, enhance transparency, so that also could be what Heidi was saying about three visits or visiting the schools. And then I had be more present at school events, so that's duplicate of, what did you say, three visits or three people, three schools?
And which one did you put that under?
She said one event a month, is what they did before.
I was just giving you an example, I don't remember the details on it.
Okay, so those are all.
So, so I'm going to call it school and extracurricular attendance. So we can mesh those into one.
Yep, that's good.
All right. Establish clear performance expectations for the superintendent and ourselves, well, I didn't write ourselves, but I'm thinking and ourselves, and review progress on a quarterly basis. I know we're supposed to do that, I don't know if we are doing it necessarily in my mind.
Well, you have a superintendent evaluation, guys, for me, and you have a quarterly piece that you were just trying out that is on the calendar for tonight to look at.
So I, I listed academic finance.
You put that under economic finance?
Yeah, if you're going to look at the superintendent's performance expectations, isn't that have something to do with academics? No?
I could think.
What did you say?
I guess would that be part of governance, that's part of our job?
Governance.
And then we had complete the board self-evaluation, we put that under governance.
Yep.
Be more present at school events, we already did that. Learn responsibilities of the board, that would be governance, we could do that on a retreat, maybe. Then we have, ensure all members have input, so it feels co-created.
See, I think that's governance, I think you learn that at the governance workshop.
Okay, governance.
Right, that's.
Support and model civility and respect, and hold each other accountable with, without personal attacks.
I think a lot of these are going to fall under that, retreat slash governance, yeah.
Governance, I have a.
Focus more on district, oh, schedule board retreat, we already did that one. Focus more on district success as opposed to negative aspects, that would be governance.
No, that's under success up here, we already have success.
Yeah, we've kind of covered that in a couple of these. I think that's one of those that's, that's repetitive, just, yeah, we sort of like came up with different verbiage to describe the need.
Uphold civil discourse, truly listen to all sides, that would be kind of repetitive too.
Yeah, I've got that, I think that's the governance retreat.
Okay, respect our staff, show them we believe in them, we covered that. Focus on effective governance, revisit prior training.
Again, same thing.
Clear communication protocols and a focus on information sharing.
See, we could do protocols at the governance retreat or whenever.
So that's governance too, okay. Cheese. Promote data-driven decisions, review evidence, performance data, and district strategic goals to make high-level decisions.
Academics finance.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Yeah, because that's where we get, all board members achieve level one, you wrote that somewhere already. Alternate lunch with board members and superintendents.
Relationship.
Relationships, okay.
That's what I have.
I'm sorry, I type out, so I, can you, where are we?
Right, right here, alternate lunch.
That's a most follow-up.
And have students, last one, have students work with senior citizens, technology, and board, the board prepare dinner, I think that's kind of cool.
Community engagement.
We talked about that at the, one of the trains we were in, that, that a school did that, and it was such a huge success. They invited senior citizens and, and the board supplied breakfast, and they had like NHS or student volunteers come in and help the seniors with their technology devices.
I think my mom was always, for Christmas, she always wanted someone to teach her how to use her phone, you know, I told her several times.
So when I look at some of these, what I guess I would say to you is that there's a lot of things in here, way too many. And however, what I might think about is, remember, these, these goals are for the board, for all of you to do. Some of these are events for other people to do, so we could do them as, hey, let's try to implement this, but it wouldn't necessarily be a board goal. Like, that one would be kind of administrative superintendents, and that's great, we would give dinner to them, I think that's wonderful. But this would be something that we could say, hey, at the alternative school, because I think Kendall's talked about this before, we'd like you guys to try this and we'll give dinner. I don't know if that would be a goal, that would be a really nice activity for us to get up and going.
Other districts did it as a board goal.
Okay. Okay.
It relies on the students, that's what I'm saying, Heidi, and.
Right, right, I understand that.
That's what I'm saying.
All right, so now that we've categorized everything, we can narrow it down and pick a couple key things. And what's target?
Well, governance is number one, because it came out over and over, and to be a more cohesive board, we need governance.
And so, the retreat would be a good start, right?
So, you know, what is a retreat, four or five hours generally on a Saturday?
It depends on how you want to do it, I guess the piece that you want to come up with is, what exactly do you want on that retreat, retreat to be achieved?
I was going to ask her the list.
Yeah.
I'd like how many items are under that.
So what we have under governance is self, is complete self-evaluations, complete level one M A S B, learn responsibilities and roles of a board. Have a retreat focused on trust and communication, and revisit and rewrite protocols. But I think that three of these responsibilities, trust, communication, protocols can all just be fished up into a retreat focused on governance. I mean, all of, by definition, all of those sort of fly under there, and then it's just up to us to hold ourselves accountable and say, like, these are the things we're going to do at this retreat. So I think we can narrow all of those down into one, by saying, post a board retreat.
Okay.
Bye.
So the board retreat isn't based on relationships, it's based on governance and protocols and training. However, you would build relationships by spending that time together.
Yeah.
You start off with the.
When we're talking about trust, communications, and adherence to governance, that is, I mean, that's our retreat, that's, that's what we focus on. And relationship building and conflict resolution is sort of like embedded into that. We tried that once with Scott Morrell. Maybe we need more of a discourse as opposed to a lecture, you know? Do we want to put it like a, by.
We do want.
February, by March, but like, when, when do we want to?
Well, I think the sooner, the better.
If we address all those issues, it's an eight-hour retreat, and it should be done on a Saturday.
Eight hours?
Yeah, that's a, that's a lot there, what she's talking about.
But perhaps maybe instead of that, you think about two retreats, one in the fall, one in the spring. And you pick the things that are more prevalent to you at this time. In the spring, your policies will be done, and you can do protocols, change the protocols then. And this fall, you maybe do, you know, some relationship building that we could, we could do together. So you could do both, four and four, because you're right, that's an awful long retreat, and no one's going to be good after eight hours.
Yeah, you lose attention.
Yeah.
So, next week, committee of the whole, we can decide the, the dates, I like, I think the sooner the better for the fall.
Okay, so I'm going to say bi-annual retreats, and then we commit to, to, okay.
And the, the policies will be done hopefully the end of November, so then it'll be time for the protocols, and we can jump in in February or something.
Okay, so two retreats is one of our goals, to focus on governance. We're getting there, we're getting there. What else is under governance, do we need a second one, or we just need one under each of those categories?
So we also have the self-evaluations.
One under each category?
And then reflect back later when you do the board evaluation to see if you hit all of these things that you wanted to do. And if not, then you put it on for the next time, when you go to a retreat in the spring, you say, here's all the things we want to get ready for next year, and have these ready by July of next year.
So that would be our governance goal then, is the bi-annual retreats, is everybody happy with that?
Okay. Academics finance, we have, I, these are going to be tricky, because these are sort of embedded into, they're already required. But establish clear performance expectations for the superintendent and data-driven decisions and strategic goals.
So that's already part of my evaluation that you guys will do in January, we've set some pieces for that, as well as, the expectations are already aligned in the, for the evaluation. And then you have a strategic plan as well. So if that's your goal, is to develop my goals, you are, that's just part of what you're going to do no matter what. So if you wanted to pick another goal, you already have to do that as part of my eval.
I just think that we don't always communicate effectively, and I thought that would be a, a good, if we set, because, did we set your goals for this year?
No, they need to be set. No, they had to be set early on, and so my goals right now, when I go through the calendars, discussing they'd be for January. January till December.
Right, so we need, if we could set those goals by January.
Okay, so we'll say by January.
Goals used to come out of the evaluation.
But she hasn't had one in a couple years, so I guess we could take the old one.
We just did one, like June, last June.
A year ago.
Right.
So it's been a little while, that's all. We'd have to pull that out and, I'd have to pull that out and reread it.
Okay, so I have by January.
I don't know, were you part of them? You were not part of it.
I was a part of one.
Okay. I feel like you came in when I wasn't, but okay.
We spent a lot of time in this room.
I don't think there's been a evaluation for at least two years.
Well, there wasn't one last year, so there was one a year ago in 2024, June of 2024.
So then we did that one.
That's the one we did? Because we came out in 2023.
And based on when we did the training, you were not scheduled to have one until November of '26, or was it '27?
No, you, no, no, it's every other year, so we passed the deadline already to set up an eval that would go from July until June.
Right.
So it would be December of '26. This is '26, so it would be, you would set, my suggestion to you when we go over the board calendars, you set my goals in December to begin implementing in January.
I forgot to read this, because I thought it was November. I thought there was a timeline that she gave us.
It can be whatever you guys choose it to be, but if it's quarterly, then it's January. And every three months, you have an update, is what I have on here. But this is set for you guys to, but again, what I'm saying is you may not want to waste a goal on that, because you have to do it anyway. If that makes you feel good to do that, you're going to have to do that no matter what, to set goals.
So what would be the other academic slack? What's the other one?
Well, I just want to remind you can't perform academics.
No, but I would, what would she have, under that category, what does she have? Or do we have?
The second one was data-driven decisions and strategic goals. So I don't know if we want to, I know, I was, oh, the calendar's over here. We had ECR presentations that are coming up, so I don't know if we want to if we want to identify something specific based on, you know, digging more into those presentations that we get. Quarterly updates on them. Oh, ECR's like right away next year. Student system of support is coming up.
And those are only suggestions.
Right.
So may I suggest that your academic finance goal can be centered around setting board policy around a fund balance and develop a plan for working towards that fund balance. That's an example of one that we did before. You could spend time, you know, I mean, we're already going to do it anyway. We're going to bring ECR, and then we're going to bring student systems of support to you so that you can understand the whole picture of going through there if you agree to the schedule. But that's not something you can do. That's something we have to do. But you can set the policy for the fund balance. You can set the plan for moving forward. I would say that your community engagement and relationship goals are probably things that you actually can do. This is something that's going to happen anyway.
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking.
Okay, so we want, and two, do we want something specific to increase it to the 5% knowing that that's?
I think you have to wait for the audit to be done and what have you. You might just say to work together to develop a fund balance plan, like we did last time. We said by this date, it's achievable, by this date, it's achievable. But you're going to do that anyway in our policy review. So.
This will just hold us.
All right, so I'm going to make it short and simple and just say develop a policy on fund balance.
Perfect.
Okay. Community engagement.
What's our list under that?
It's pretty short. We have listening sessions with community and student sharing sessions where the board provides the dinner.
Then wouldn't we put under go to more events under that?
I have it up on relationship building, but we can knock it down to community engagement, because that came up most often. Do we want it to be that?
Yeah.
Okay, so increase attendance at school and extracurricular, whoops, events, okay?
I mean, the school events is great, too, but community is everything. I know, like, when, in June, when they do the flag raising for gay pride, I think that's another item that could be considered. I think community as a whole, not just events at the school.
Okay, so what if I say school and community events?
Yeah.
Okay. And then.
So do we want to?
I thought you got up, I don't know why, I just, like, in my peripheral, I saw you got up and walked away. And you were still sitting right there.
I'm over there, okay.
Or even the promiscone dinner. Maybe if we all commit to going to the promiscone dinner and sitting together and supporting the promiscone, that could be a goal.
Might I suggest you think about putting that under relationships and that you pick some community events to go together.
Yeah.
Like, two community events, and that could be open schools, or that could be conference together, or that could be promiscone.
So our build relationships has the longest list that we, oh, hold on, I'm going to knock one off, because we just put it under. Okay, so for build relationships, we have student voices at the table, celebrate successes of our staff, board roundtables with staff, attendance at open schools dinners, and lunch with board members and superintendent.
And I've already started putting times where you guys can come to my office. I'm happy to put lunches in there. Would you want to meet for lunches?
No, I just think it's important to build a one-on, you know, you hang out with a couple of board members all the time, and you don't, there's no. So I just think, and those times I did see, but they're not cohesive to everybody's schedules, so.
So is that what we want the build relationships goal to be, rotating lunches?
Or maybe even a dinner together. It does not matter. It's, you know.
At one point in time, you did a thing that said have three board events, and then you decide what those three board events might be. I don't know if you want to pick a number. I'm happy to have lunch individually with you anytime.
I think that's fair, because then we can sort of encompass open schools, things like promiscone or community events, and rotating, I mean, again, like, we're talking about it. We know what it means.
Right, so I think three different community events. Because even though we might all go to the open schools all the time, that would not be different.
Right, okay, so.
That would be an event.
It would be one that everybody went together.
Right, but I'm saying if we all go to three events, I don't think that should count as our three, open schools dinner. I don't think that should count as our three events.
The three events.
We should do it a different.
Okay, so I'm going to say three unique.
There you go.
Individuals.
Okay.
Three individual events. Is that fair?
Yes, okay. All right.
So which one do we not? So that's.
And you may want to just think about the holidays. In the past, we used to go out, and then we started cooking and getting holiday in for you before a board member meeting. So maybe you want to do a holiday dinner together, and if we're going to do that, we know in the past that we have to start scheduling that, like, in a couple of weeks, in order to get a time that works on everybody's calendar during that time.
I was going to say, it has to be like December 1st.
We did it one time before a meeting.
Yeah. Okay. So to narrow them down, just so we all hear them at the same time, we have build relationships. Attend three individual relationship-building events. Governance, host biannual retreats. Academics, academic finance, develop a policy on fund balance. Community engagement, increase attendance at school and community events.
Sounds good to me.
Do we do it?
One for each.
Yeah.
Okay, so now, to be more difficult, do we want to say how many events? Do we want to say everybody should attend one a month, or five a year, or six a year?
Everybody's busy, so I think six is fair.
And then come back and give a, the comments at the end, say, I went to this? Because that way, we do an A.
I think we all do it anyways, pretty much.
You do, yeah.
So, I mean.
Ooh, what was that?
We will data collect for you and then work with President Hinton to, when we talk about where we are in our goals towards the end of the year, we'll keep track of that. We, meaning Jamie, will keep track of that and we'll write that down.
I think we should.
I don't think we need to add that to Jamie's list. I think we're all pretty sufficient.
Jamie's face says she doesn't think we need to add it to her either.
No.
No, no, but I think that I would like to, like, revisit this maybe in six months and say how we are. How far are we along with our goals?
I think we can have a discussion and.
Well, I mean, we're about to set our calendars, so six months from now, we can put a goal update on our calendar.
That's just what I want.
Okay.
Good job.
I'm going to email these.
Thank you, April. It's awesome.
So you're going to send us the list of that?
Yeah.
Is that something we need to vote on at our next meeting?
I think if you want to be committed to it, then you should vote on them and approve them at the board meeting. Next month, or next week, you can take a look at them. Make a determination if you want to tweak them. Those of you that might not want to say anything here can say something to President Hinton, and then have them ready for the meeting.
And that'll give me a moment to look at him, too, since he wasn't here.
Well, yeah, because we want Nate to be able to weigh in.
I'm sure he's watching at home.
But we can talk about it, you know, we can talk about it next week at the committee of the whole, too.
Okay, Jamie, I'm going to send this to you then, too. You're welcome.
She's not so bad on my list.
Wonderful, thank you, thank you, yes. Board calendar, then.
So I'm hoping to talk through this calendar again next week, but I wanted to get it in front of you. I put the workshop off to the right, and relooked at, I went through our old board calendar and kind of redid it. I am confident that I probably missed some things. I was speaking with Dr. Dolman this morning, and I said, I know that there were some things like, yep, we're going to put it on the calendar. So if I can kind of talk through some of this, and then you can give things back, so we can bring it to the committee of the whole. So I think the first one is easy, that student loan resolution is due in July. And then in talking to Dr. Dolman, she feels like July is the right time to give the iReady data for the spring, just knowing the time that stuff comes through. This would not be M-stub data. This would be the year-long report on growth from iReady.
So I have a quick question. July, are you talking, July already happened?
We're talking next July. So what we're trying to develop is a board calendar that would stay consistent and is a little more updated from what you guys have been doing. And then we have a cabinet one that's even more detailed.
Okay, I just, because I thought July just passed, and August passed.
So I retooled this to start in July, since that's the beginning of the year, instead of starting in January, because I was struggling to see the progression of the year. Then obviously, August, we would do the strategic plan and district improvement plan, alternative waivers, which have not even come out from the state yet, even though they're due in August, your board goals, unless you want to change those to July or to June, and then your bylaws and resolutions. Those were all the big-ticket items in August. Then quarterly flow-through budget updates and line item updates. So this is the request to have, like, the promiscone and the coalition updates given to you on a quarterly basis, along with the every other month of giving the line item updates about where we are with the budget. So if you have a better idea of what I should call that, let me know, but I was kind of finagling that in, because I know those were two things you asked for quarterly. And then it was also asked to give the business office ISD plan an update quarterly. So we would give you a quarterly update on where we are with the items that Terry Lee suggested for us to do, and any other items that we have. In September, we always give you teacher tenure. We know that, you know, that's, teachers love to hear that. We love to let them know new staff introduction. And then superintendent eval check-in. You wouldn't have my eval this year. It would be next year at that time that that is one of the final quarters of the check-in. And then summer school update. Unless I messed that up, July, August, September. Nope, that's superintendent check-in. So I put board goals here just because that's what you already have. And then the First Amendment of the budget would be in October, the audit and National Principals Month. And our suggestion is the ECR presentation, so that they can come in and explain to you the ECR dashboards and what they do and the information behind it. And then in November, we would bring student system of support, safety, and data, because to explain to you how we're bringing that in one fail swoop and circle, that includes data, our EOPs, and all of that information as well, so. In November, the course handbook. Our goal is to have that course handbook updated, so that in January, our students are starting to enroll, unlike the past a little bit later. And so then our count day update, the sinking fund plan was on this time, and then Leo update. The Leo update would be reduced to two a year. We have to do that as Oakland Schools gives us grant, but we don't have to do four times a year. Then in December, we would review the three-year plans, strategic plan update, and superintendent normally would be the final eval. So, and that's the six-month mark.
Okay, reviewing the three-year plan. We're still getting that this November.
In November, but in the future, it would be December, because it really, that three-year plan is supposed to be guiding our budget that she should be working on, and she'll see in a minute. So then I just put a question mark aboard training. I, you know, wasn't sure what you guys might want, but I just hit board training as a question mark. It goes on for December, the quarterly flow-through line items, the business office ISD plan. I thought we picked last time December for honoring our AP students, because they were home from break. And then bids for the sinking fund. The Q did the sinking fund update the month before, so then we would bring bid RFP pieces to you, and the school of choice resolution is due in December. Then in January, superintendent evaluation goal-setting and evaluation data, where we would talk about what you were talking about earlier, what are you guys looking for, what things you would want me to do. And that would be our special meeting in January, a workshop. Organizational meeting, then all of these things, school board appreciation, the training for new board members, approval of protocols, strategic plan update, because it's quarterly, approved committee dates and special meetings, review the policy. Our second budget amendment would be due then, and the benchmark assessment in January. Then in February, you don't have a plan yet. You can talk about what works for you. Maybe that's one of your weekend gatherings instead of a thing. Review count day again. Oakland Schools Outstanding Teacher of the Year and the Student System of Support update. So we would go back to this information that we gave to you before, and we would give you an update on how we're doing academically, et cetera, and with behavior. Then in March, count day update, certified staffing approval, renewal of the food service contract, and we'll have to go to bid for food service this year, support person of the year, and your third budget amendment. And the draft for next year's, oh, I think this Leo is wrong. Take that one off. Superintendent evaluation check-in, that's usually the written one for the first quarter. Then our quarterly flow-through, the ISD update, and then department handbooks would be two in March. Then it's non-renewal of staff in April, renew administrative contracts, the museum contract, resolution for teacher appreciation, quarterly strategic plan update, school year calendars, hopefully, but sometimes those are delayed from negotiations. Superintendent evaluation update, I feel like I just did that. That's not, that's in March, not April, right? January, February, March. I know I did it twice, so one of those is wrong. We'll pull one of those off. Yearly department orders, so you asked us to give orders on a yearly basis in technology and for our software, like we did for curriculum, and so our goal is to get that to you in April this year, so that all those things can be ordered in June.
Those are the yearly contracts.
Yes, we're going to try to put that all together, as we discussed. Sometimes it's difficult, right, just because you don't have all the quotes yet, but we can, you know, get there to you. And then board evaluation shared in April with your May self-evaluation meeting, for the special meeting. Staff appreciation, May, retiree years of service, the resolution to approve or disapprove, your self-evaluation shared, I'm going to take that off there, or we can leave it, the debt levy, ADK appreciation, hours and days waiver, and then the integrative pest management update. And then you see June as the budget presentations again. It'll be the final budget and the draft budget for '26, '27. Approval of all of your budgets, tax rate approvals, approval for the resolution for state aid if needed, MHSSA resolutions, review board self-assessment, that needs to be taken off. Second attendance semester presentation comes off. Superintendent self-evaluation at special meeting, I think that's off at the wrong date. I gotta look at that again. Board evaluation approval at the regular meeting, which that we did orderly, quarterly flow-through budget updates, superintendent mid-year, we're evaluating many times. Oh, yeah, that is what it is at six months there. Leo update, MHSSA resolution, and business office ISD plan update. So I have some cleaning up that I'll give to you over the weekend, but if you have some suggestions of where things need to be moved, and I'm sure I'll talk with President Hinton tomorrow in our meeting with some ideas that she has, and then I. Hinton tomorrow in our meeting with some ideas that she has, and then I will also share after next week what the district office calendar is gonna look like about the district committees. And so then you can cross-check and see if you want any of those moved for approval, I hope, at the September board meeting.
I just have it. And it doesn't matter to me, so we're doing a quarterly thing in September, that would be the end of, that meeting would be the, so that it'd be October, November, December would be a quarterly, okay, quarterly, January, February, March?
Then March is the quarterly update.
And April, May, June, so it's ending in June.
Right. That's our, that's our school year flow-through. And you've asked for those quarterly finances, if I missed one, please let me know, but I'm trying.
No, I'm just trying to...
It's every three months, it's quarterly, it's every three months.
So I was thinking, okay, if you start with January, then you, January, February, March, but I wasn't doing this. Then you would do it in April because you need to finish it, but it doesn't matter, as long as it's every three months, that's a quarterly.
Yeah, July's the first.
Okay. So I was confused on that one.
Yes, yes.
And then I have a question about, okay, so in April, we have board evaluation shared?
Yes, that's when we send the link, and then you would have, the May was when you would do it.
Okay. I'm like, it seems out of order, link sent.
Yeah, I can change that to link.
No, I just, I didn't understand, I thought you meant share it.
Oh, no, yeah.
Sorry, Jamie, okay.
Because we share it the month before and then it comes in and we have to give them a certain amount of time.
Okay.
It's a lot, so I'm sure there's things that I left off.
I have the old one and not with me.
Oh, yeah, compare it to the old one, but there's other things you guys have asked for, and I just want to make sure that I didn't miss some of those reports you were asking for.
I guess when I, when I see the report, I'll say, wait a minute, this is, this is perfect, or this is, I need more.
I'll make those changes that I caught and send it back out to you this weekend.
Okay.
Good, anybody else?
I don't have anything.
All right. So we're moving on to a closed session, so I need a motion to go into closed session.
I move the Board of Education recess into closed session under item 8H to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state and federal statute, attorney-client privilege.
Support.
Are we allowed to discuss what this topic is, or, so we don't know what we're going in closed session for?
Attorney-client privilege, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion by Heidi and second by Monica to go into closed session under 8H of the Open Meetings Act in a discussion, no real call.
Yes.
Routine?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Yes.
The front ones?
Yes.
Yes.
I need a motion to call the meeting back to order.
I make a motion to call the meeting back to regular session.
Support.
Motion by Heidi and second by Monica to call the meeting back to order. Roque, please.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rattie?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
LeProwes?
Yes.
Yes. A motion, I mean, any?
I make a motion to follow the recommendation of Miller Johnson's opinion letter to keep Patrick Wright as a wrestling coach for the 25-26 school year. And I would also, based on the broadcast, we would like to make that opinion letter public record.
I think it's, can we do two separate motions for that?
Sure.
Just to make it clear, I think it's easier. Only because it was attorney-client privilege. I think it should be two separate, two separate motions, that's all.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion to make the opinion letter from Miller Johnson public record.
Support. So you're changing the first.
Well, she said to make it two. So I make it two.
Okay, so I'll support that one.
Okay.
So we have two. So is that the first vote to make the letter public? Motion by Heidi, second by Debbie. Any discussion? Okay, Roque.
Fortress?
Yes.
LeProwes?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Fox?
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 Yes.
LeProwes?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.